Appeals in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty. This public meeting is available in remote form. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast. With us this evening is our assistant town planner, Alvaro Espaza, who will be controlling the Zoom feed this evening. And first order of business will be to call the meeting to order and take a roll call. I, John Trefethan, am present.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, I'm present.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, I'm present.
Hi, Anton de Kamarov, I'm present.
Hi, Ryan Solomon, I'm present.
And as I mentioned before we got started, our member Nathan Band is unable to join us this evening. First or second item on our agenda after calling the meeting to order is a discussion with Sunita Kara, who had expressed interest in joining the board as an associate member. I don't see Ms. Kara listed as anyone who's here participating at the Zoom meeting. Alvaro, is Ms. Kara signed on to us?
No, I have not, John.
Okay, well, why don't we skip over that? And if she does appear, we can we can take that matter up at that time. Moving on to item number three, a continued hearing for fifty-nine West Union Street. This is a public hearing that opened on February fourteenth, was continued to February twenty-eighth, continued thereafter to March fourteenth, continued thereafter to April eleventh, and then to this evening. I'll read the notice briefly. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will reopen and continue the public hearing to hear the petition of Emery Bond and Brandon Bond, trustees of the Island Pond Trust, who have applied to the ZBA to appeal the building commissioner's determination under Ashland zoning bylaws, section nine point two point two point three, parenthesis Board of Appeals, close parenthesis, along with any other applicable sections of the Ashland zoning bylaws. The building commission's enforcement letter dated November thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two states the recent expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming use is in violation of the Ashland bylaws. The property in question is located at fifty-nine West Union Street, assesses map nineteen lot sixty-three in the Highway Commerce Zoning District. And parties wishing to be heard of the matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. That being said, at our last meeting, we took a vote to close the public comment. Since then, we have received three items that I would consider public comment that should properly be entered into the record, I believe. So I think we need to reopen the public comment session once again for entry of these items into the record. We have a submission by an attorney on behalf of one of the abutters, which was referenced at our last meeting. But the report and exhibits were forwarded to the planning department, not in time to be forwarded to the board members. And we also have received a written submission by the applicants, together with another written submission by their counsel. And then today we've received two letters for a letter from, two letters from two abutters, all of which asked to be included in the public record. And I think it's appropriate that we do so. Would someone like to make a motion to reopen a public comment? Or a discussion about that?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Stu. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Hi, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Hi, Anton de Kamarov, vote in favor.
Hi, Ryan Solomon, vote in favor.
Excellent. And for the record, let me read what those documents are. I'm not going to read all of each document because they're rather lengthy. A letter with attachments from attorney Jonathan Silverstein dated April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, on behalf of one of the abutters, Mr. Rodenheiser. Again, that was referenced and talked about at our last meeting. We have another copy of the November thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two letter from building commissioner Douglas Scott to Brandon Bond and Emery Bond, again, dated November thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Attached to that are the certified mail in return receipt certificates for the letter referencing that it was delivered on seven November, two thousand and twenty-two. Thereafter, we have a letter from attorney George F. Connors, representing the applicant, dated April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, consisting of three pages plus attachments. And thereafter, we have a what I would call, I guess, a memorandum filed by the applicants, the trustees of Island Pond Trust, addressed to the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals, dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Consisting of it's like five pages plus attachments. We have a letter from Jeffrey Marcus of sixty-five West Union Street, dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And to summarize, it speaks in in support of the applicant. And then an email from Jeff Stone of not sure what his address is, but he refers to himself as a direct abutter to fifty-nine West Union Street. Again, an email dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And summarizing, he also speaks in behalf of the and in support of the applicants. That being said, Attorney Connors, I believe, when we last left us at the hearing last, last week, the issue of the timeliness of the filing of the appeal of the building commissioner's decision was what we were talking about. And at that point, the meeting was continued to give you an opportunity to respond and also to give the board an opportunity to look at the letter from attorney Silverstein. All of that being said, what would you like, would you like to say something at this point? Or rely on your written submission of April twentieth? I'd leave you muted, Attorney Connors.
Sorry about that. I'd like to just briefly touch on that memo candidly, if that's all right, what is happening. In the interim, when we went to investigate this, there were additional email communications through the bonds from the building inspector. Also, a, what I call a request for records from a an attorney on July, early July, which I think really goes directly to this matter, asking for all sorts of records from the town regarding bond's operation on their property. I don't know what records were actually turned in to them from this request. But having seen that and the fact that the bonds from two thousand, before two thousand and nineteen, with walks with the planning board, attending planning board meetings on the impending zoning change, have worked diligently to try and ascertain and protect their rights as a contractor's yard out there. And we submitted an awful lot of Google imagery to show the areas that had been used. So I do think that there's a lot of layers to this that really are prejudicial to the bonds, and I don't know why, why that is. Clearly, they've had a lot of conversations, upfront conversations on the use of that property, especially considering the impending zoning change. And they were with the building inspector and the town manager and others in town relative to this for days and weeks and perhaps months from, from July twenty-eighth where that letter came in sometime around there, till the November time period where various orders were issued and discussed. Well, I think they were very confused and quite frankly shocked by what was taking place when it's pretty clear that everybody associated with this knew that they were A, protecting and B, had operated out there for a long time. And I think our submission with past plans indicating barn was not a residential barn in nineteen seventies really goes to the, the, the point of this. They shouldn't have to go get another permit to operate what we believe is pre-existing non-conforming. There's been a lot of money spent on this. And I don't think it's really appropriate for the members of the town, the bonds, to have to go through this when it's pretty apparent. The building inspector in his November ninth email that cease allowing the tenant to use the space to the right of the house and remove the accessory structure. Well, they have removed the accessory structure post that letter or email. And they are prepared to have the contractor who rents as a tenant and simply uses his truck to go back and forth to work. Yes, he does have a trailer and yes, he does have a little mini excavator, they call it. And they'll put that up in the backyard so we can comply with that November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two email. And I think that's where we'd like to rest on this and simply dispense of it. I, I just don't see why this makes sense. I don't think this is fair to the bonds. And I will yield to you. I do believe the bonds want to discuss anything, if there is anything to discuss.
Well, they certainly have an opportunity to do so, Attorney Connors. And I guess from my perspective, and obviously, all the members of the board will have an opportunity to address this. But the initial jurisdiction that we have on an appeal of a building commissioner order, which is what was done, has to be done within the time period set by the statute. And the statute provides for a time period of thirty days. We have the somewhat confusing date of the letter being November thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. However, it was clearly mailed and received on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We have an email from Emery Bond, one of your clients, addressed to Mr. Scott, Peter Magic, the town planner, the town manager, the assistant town manager, dated Wednesday, November ninth, acknowledging receiving the letter dated November thirty-first. There's a response from Mr. Scott later, just minutes later on November ninth, saying, as stated in my letter, you may file an appeal on my determination. And there are several more emails back and forth, finalized by one November ninth, saying at eight twenty-eight AM, saying explaining why he filed his, sent his letter. So it's seeing, and then we have your letter of December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, wherein you notice that, note that this is an appeal pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section fifteen. So even if we use the December sixteenth date and not the date that is contained on to the application to Zoning Board of Appeals standard form, which was entered on December twenty-second, it seems that it's thirty days after actual noted, beyond thirty days after actual notice and beyond thirty days after constructive notice. So I, I don't see what what jurisdiction we have at this point to rule on the building commissioner's decision. Brian, you're, I'm sorry, Attorney Connors.
Mr. Connors, I would like, I'd like to address the board if that's possible. So I did forward over an email earlier today from the assistant town planner who helped guide us in this process. I'm not sure if you've seen that email, but if not, I could share my screen and I could show you that email.
It was not, it was not submitted as far as I know. I don't think it got forwarded to us.
Yeah, I, I, it was meant to be sent last week and I noticed it wasn't received, so I sent a follow-up email this morning for it to be submitted to the record. But if I could share my screen, I could show you that email and give you the direction that we were given from the town in regards to this matter.
Alvaro, can you give Mr. Bond the power to do that?
Yes, Sir Bond, I think that you should be able to share your screen.
Can you see my screen?
No, it's up now. There we go. Now it's working.
All right, so if you can see my screen, this was an email dated November ninth, shortly after I met with Doug Scott in person at the town of Ashland. And it says, hello, Emma, I was just in town hall and I spoke with Doug Scott regarding the zoning appeals letter that he sent me that was dated November thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm looking to appeal that letter and I was wondering if you could explain to me, explain to me the process of getting the zoning board of appeals process going. Please send me back the next steps and I'll get the ball rolling. Thank you, Emery Bond. It was only on November seventeenth, which was almost two weeks after I sent that initial email. Mrs. Snellings wrote back. Hello, thank you for reaching out to the zoning board of, of, about the Zoning Board of Appeals, Profess. I have attached the application. Please let me know if you have any questions on that. You can mail in your application or submit it in person at town hall. You will need an abutters list and property card, and these can be requested from the assessor's office. You will need to apply within thirty days of the date of the building commissioner's letter, which we all know is November thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. This was on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And she sent me the application, so it was at that point that was the only, only guidance that I had, that we had to go off of to base our appeal, and we filed our appeal in December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, which is thirty days, within thirty days of the presumed November thirty-first date.
Well, Mr. Bond, I would note that there was an email from Mr. Scott to you dated November ninth at seven thirty-six AM, saying, quote, as I stated in my letter, you may file an appeal on my determination, end quote. Subsequently, there was an email dated the same day from And it was from you dated November ninth at eight eleven AM, stating Doug, quote, before I file any application with the Zoning Board of Appeal, I would like to know why you issued your letter, end quote. And Mr. Scott replied seventeen minutes later.
Yes, I, I'm aware of those emails. The director from Mr. Scott was to talk to Ms. Snellings about the process. I reached out to Ms. Snellings. She told me I had thirty days from the date of the letter. I have no other date to go off of. But that's
You, Mr. Bond, you acknowledge you received the letter on November seventh, which would be twenty-four days before the date of the letter?
Yes, it was, it was confusing to us too how we received a letter that was presumably in the future before we received it, but we, we questioned them on it. He could have rescinded the letter. He could have reissued the letter. He chose not to. That's the only letter that we had to work off of. And from the guidance of the assistant town planner, Ms. Snellings, she gave us thirty days from the date of that letter, and that's all I had to work off of. You, you can, you can see my confusion on that. But unfortunately, that was the director given from town officials.
I'm not going to argue with you, Mr. Bond, but one of your November ninth emails indicates you knew you had to, you had to appeal something with the Zoning Board of Appeals.
From that letter, the November thirty-first letter.
But you acknowledge you received the letter on November seventh, so clearly the late date of the letter was not November, it was, even though it was dated November thirty-first, the letter was received constructively by you and you had constructive knowledge well before November thirty-first.
Again, I'm not an expert in this. I had not sought right to counsel on this. So I got directive from the town assistant town planner. I sought out representation from attorney Connors. And that's when we submitted the application. I had, I this was a shock to me that we received the letter. I'm not an expert in this field. The, the message from the town assistant town planner was pretty clear and that's what we're calling.
May I interject?
Certainly, Attorney Connors.
November, we, we all know that there's several dates here. We all know that Mr. Bond is not aware of when he should file and how many days from receipt. He did make efforts to understand this, again, after having spent inordinate amounts of time from two thousand and nineteen on. But the November ninth, the earliest order by the building inspector is cease allowing the tenant to use the space to the right of the house and remove the structure. If we go back to that and he does all that stuff, applies with that, then I don't think that they should be going any more forward with this now that they can comply. That's one option. The other is for the board to do whatever they want. And then we'll let the, whatever appeal would be necessary take place. As I indicated, there was a case that I found where the appeals court, where there were numerous dates on a request for the Building Inspector Act. And the thirty days had long expired. And the court allowed that process to go forward at a later date. So I think that we, we feel confident, A, that we could prevail and get an equitable jurisdiction from the court. But for what, what is that going to tell us? We're going to move the tenant pickup trailer to the back of the property as requested in the November ninth. I'm trying to make this easy for these folks. They have spent a bit of time trying to prove that they are and protect their property on commercial use.
Well, Attorney Connors, if your, if your position is that your clients have complied with the instructions of the building commissioner, why don't you just withdraw your appeal and that ends the matter?
Well, we, we would do that, but we'd really like to get, because of all the work that they've done from two thousand and nineteen, pending dealing with that zoning change and ascertaining it, we have various documents from the town that says it would be grandfathered. We'd like to get that on the record so they don't have to go through this again. But we certainly are able to withdraw. You don't even have to make a decision. You can just let it go. And it kind of expires. So there's two or three different things we could do. But really, in fairness to these folks, they ran a contractor's yard, their father ran a contractor's yard. The area, if you look at it, and I visited again this weekend and walked it, it's clear it's been a contractor's yard for a long, long time.
Well, I mean, Attorney Connors, as you recall, we saw guidance of town council early on in this matter as far as what our authority was because you said you were seeking a in substance of section six.
Finding.
Finding. And the opinion of town council is that the Ashland bylaws do not provide for such a finding by the Zoning Board of Appeals that it has to be by way of a special permit because we're the special permit granting authority and that you needed to file a special permit application in order to bring that together along with the appeal of the building commissioner's order. You have not done that, and that is certainly your right. But we, we don't, based on the advice of our council, we don't have the authority to do that. And without a special permit application being filed so that it's and publicly noticed and published for the, to the public, we don't have the authority to grant a special permit if we, if we chose to do so. So we're sort of, I think we're sort of constrained. And again, I'm doing all the talking, so I don't want to I don't want to keep it from, you know, I'll encourage other board members to to speak up on this if you think I'm going off on the wrong analysis on this, but I, I just don't see where where we go.
Well, let me ask this question.
If your, if your clients have complied with the letter of the building inspector and it's with, and your appeal is withdrawn, then presumably your clients will continue with their business and in compliance with the letter of the building commissioner. And there won't be, there won't be any any problems. You referenced the legal decision from that case by the Mass Appeals Court. And that obviously, as you know, dealt with a, in a butter who filed numerous requests with the building commissioner at that point, saying that her neighbor was not operating appropriately within a non-conforming use. And she filed numerous complaints, many of which she didn't appeal, and the appeals court held it was too late because it was beyond thirty days. But the last one, she appealed and it was within thirty days. And they said that she could go forward with that. And they reviewed, reversed the land court judge who had ruled that you can't keep filing. But the appeals court said that you could, so it's a different situation. But what I'm saying is if you withdraw the appeal and your clients have had their tenant comply with his order in his November thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two letter, I don't know what we're fighting about.
I don't think we're fighting.
Okay, I mean, I, is that, I mean, so that, I think, well, you know, fighting in the, in the legal sense and not the, not in any other sense. A very inappropriate use of the word. I apologize for that. I don't think we're arguing about anything. Really, Stu, Anton, Ryan, any any thoughts on this?
Ryan Solomon, I would just like some thought. So are you prepared to withdraw the withdraw the appeal at this point?
Ryan, we're having a difficult time hearing you. You're very soft.
One second, I'll fix that soon.
I suspect your computer instead of your headphones are picking up your mic.
Yeah, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Much better.
Thank you very much. So yes, my my question was Attorney Connors, I'm I'm still a little unclear. Are we withdrawing? Are you withdrawing? The appeal at this point. Or not?
You give me a minute?
Certainly.
I mute? I'm going to mute. Is that all right for a minute?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you. We will therefore appeal. We withdraw without prejudice? My own?
Uh, I'm sorry. So we withdraw without. Without withdrawal without prejudice. I mean, obviously, this decision. At this point is well past thirty days, so this is the. Sole opportunity to appeal this decision. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Attorney Connors, when you say without prejudice, are you? Are you referring to? The request for a section six order? Or I'm not quite sure what without prejudice means.
We we would be concerned that there would be another order. Against this property. And we would want to be able to appeal that. If indeed it came.
Well, certainly that, I mean, the the. Appeals court decision that you referenced would certainly. Support that. I mean, each each order. Or each a butter's complaint stands on its own and references a new. A thirty-day appeal order. A timeframe order. And if there were to be another one, I'm. I'm sure your clients now are well aware of the thirty-day period in which to appeal painfully so. So I just want to make sure we we sort of wrap. We're all on the same page about how this is going to be. Be wrapped up. You, your clients will withdraw. Their application.
I will do that, yes.
Okay. And once that is done. I don't think there's anything else that. The board needs to do. Brian, Stu, Anton, Ryan. Thoughts on anything else that we would need to do to? If the application is withdrawn?
Should we get confirmation from the building inspector that 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 he's? Okay with. This action?
Well, I don't think he has.
So he's aware of what's going on with the property?
That I don't. That I don't know. However, like any other property. I mean, I. I don't think we have the. I don't think we have the authority nor nor should we. Hold this matter to give the building commissioner an opportunity to look to see if. The. Applicants have complied with his. Restriction. I don't think that's within our. Our purview. If they withdraw their appeal, then his letter with its. Restriction stands. And if at some point he finds that. They are not in compliance with that. Then the. Bylaws and. The bylaws provide for. Enforcement penalties, which frankly are substantial. So. I don't think we need to get them. The building commissioners. Approval for. Allowing the applicant to. Withdraw its. Appeal. Anton?
I'm just wondering a little bit on the flip side, and this this maybe is still would kind of not within the scope of our authority, but if. The position is that they have complied with the building commissioner's order. And that kind of. Soft recommendation of this board is to just withdraw the. Appeal, but then it comes back that the building commission that the the building commissioner disagrees. I mean, they'll they'll be well past their thirty-day period. I don't know if there's anything we can really do about that, but just. Could be slightly prejudicial to the bonds.
Well, again, that or we, you know, go forward, and if we take a vote and find that. The appeal wasn't filed in a timely fashion. They're sort of back in the same. Spot they were in, I would I would think.
If if there were a later finding of a violation, they would have the ability to obviously oppose that finding. Separately, and that's, you know, done through a different. Different forum. So I mean, I don't. You know, it's their appeal is 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 withdrawn through this proceeding. I don't think we have anything else really to concern ourselves with. Going forward unless there's a later determination that they appeal again. But that would be separate from any enforcement of of a violation of current. Order.
Correct. Correct.
So so if the if the bonds withdraw their appeal. Does that mean that the property is clear for the bonds to? Function. On a daily basis without any sort of. Current repercussions from the town.
Well, I can't speak for. Any. Other entity of of the the town, what what they would. Be able to do, I presume, is operate their business. And comply as a nonconforming preexisting use. And if that is challenged by. The building commissioner or by someone else. Then. There would be. Perhaps another proceeding started or appeals star filed, and. It would wend its way back. Through. The system probably to come back before the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, well, that's that's all I was. Was curious about whether, you know, if if the bonds withdraw their appeal. And we look forward to tomorrow, they're clear to function. With their business.
As long as it's within the. Restrictions placed by the building commissioner. In his November thirty-first, twenty twenty-two letter. Where he asked them to take certain actions. So as long as they've done that. Then they have complied with his.
Well, that's what I'm. That's that's the point that I'm trying to make is that bonds want to get some. I suspect the bonds want to get some sort of feedback. From the building inspector said, okay. I'm happy. Proceed with your business. And I think that's what they're looking for, but now it's kind of up in the air because no one is. The building inspector hasn't responded to the fact that. You know, the. They have done what he. Asked them to do.
Well, I don't know that he was required to re to respond to them. So.
It it's a no news is good news situation, obviously, if. I don't I don't think we'll. I don't. I don't think we'll get a building commissioner coming out and saying you're in compliance that they're. They'll only tell you when you're not.
Okay, well.
John, is it possible to reread the original letter from the building commissioner? If I remember, it's relatively short, but. You could just refresh what?
Yeah, hold on. Hold on just a minute. I. Had it here in front of me. Okay, I'll I'll read it. It's addressed to the bonds. It has been brought to my attention that you have increased your business footprint by having a separate. Contractor taking up space to the right of the house within the front yard setback. You have also had an accessory building added to the right of the existing house. Behind the white vinyl fence that you installed. Under the town of Ashland zoning ordinance. Your business is considered preexisting, nonconforming. Said it was just not allow a contractor share in today's zoning ordinances. Any increase in use requires a special permit. From the ZBA. For an expand for the expansion of a preexisting, nonconforming use. Also, the accessory structure that was added. Is in violation of section four point one point three. As accessory structures may not be located within the required yards. And this structure must be moved in the expanded use. Located with the fenced-in area must also be removed. Until such time as you receive approval from the zoning. Board of Appeals. And should you be agreed by this determination, you may file an appeal.
So if I counted right, there were. Noted four violations?
Well, they were sort of. I suppose depending upon how you count them, there were two or there were four basic.
Alright, so the subcontractor's gone and the accessory building has been moved out of the setback. Is that the? Contention?
That was my understanding for what Attorney Connors represented.
Contractor, subcontractor. Will be removed from the front according to the November ninth. requirement of the building inspector, which was. Cease allowing the tenant. To use the space to the right of the house. And to remove the accessory structure. Not going to let the tenant. His equipment in the front right corner of the house. And the accessory structure was removed back in. Member.
So the tenant's still there, just in a different part of the property. And the accessory structure was moved. Accessory building was moved out of the setback.
Correct. And it is a residential. He he fenced out. Living. He doesn't run a business there.
Alright. Thank you. So. To be clear. I I guess I want to just circle back to the. Without prejudice. Aspect. I don't understand what would be without prejudice.
We believe that there is. A lot going on. On this, and as we. Go down and do additional research, just. We need to be. Assured. That. In our appeal. Somebody would recognize that we've been there for years. Operating the contractor yard. Seems that in the. The billion inspectors orders. All of a sudden. What are you guys doing out there? And. The bonds have spent months and years dealing with the town. Prior to. Zoning change. And all of a sudden, they're told. No extending violation of the shit. Stand that up.
You know, we were going around in circles. The the one are. We've given you the opinion of Town Council of how to go about doing. Getting an affirmative ruling from this board if it chooses to give an affirmative ruling, and you haven't done it. So we have what we can do, which is we can grant. Or deny, we have to. I say we have to would have to deny the appeal because it's beyond the thirty-day period. And I, for one. Would rule that we don't have the legal authority to make a section six finding. And then that would be on the record, and I don't know that you want that necessarily. It would seem to me the the classic way to go would be to simply withdraw your appeal. With prejudice, because the appeal would be of the order of November thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Which I think any way you look at it. You have to concede it was beyond thirty days, and I don't believe we have any equitable jurisdiction to extend that period. And then you're obviously free to file a special permit request if you so choose. Or to for your clients to go on with their business, and if nobody says. Anything, then they're. Good to operate as they. You know, assert that they have operated for a number of years. But without prejudice. Usually when we allow someone to do something without prejudice. I mean, it gives them the right to refile. Like a for a special permit or variance request with new evidence or something. But. This is a it's like a statute of limitations. You can have the greatest case in the world. But if you're beyond the three-year statute of limitations. You're out of luck. And, you know, the thirty-day appeal period is a thirty-day appeal period.
Let's leave it at that. I'm I'm not going to agree about the appeal period. Let's leave it as we discussed up to this point. We will withdraw the thing in writing tomorrow morning.
Okay. What I would suggest is why don't we continue this? To our next scheduled meeting, just to make sure everything is is done. I have no doubt that you will do what you said, Attorney Connors. But there'll be no need to reappear at the next hearing date. But if we don't continue it tonight, and if the question arises, then. I think we have to republish in the paper, and it gets expensive, so we don't want to do that.
I could send you an email now, but. We can do your way.
Yeah, I I would feel, you know, just so everybody's on the same page and there's no confusion or no more than the normal. Amount of confusion I find myself in. And. We go with go with that. Elvaro, what would be our next scheduled? Meeting?
I'll double check right now, John.
Be the second Tuesday in May?
Correct. It will be May ninth.
Brian, Stu, Anton, Ryan. In agreement on this?
I'm in agreement.
Yes, just looking at the dates, but yeah.
Okay, then would someone like to make a motion to continue this matter? To May ninth. Is it the second?
Second.
Aye, John, to feather them. Vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Seagle, vote in favor.
Aye, Anton de Camaral, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Attorney Connors, thank you.
Thank you.
And to your clients, the Bond brothers, wish you good luck.
Thank you for your patience and time. Night.
Good night. I see that. Ms. Kara appears to have joined our meeting. So that. Perhaps we can go back to. Item number two on the. Perhaps we can go back to item number two on the agenda. And that it would be a discussion with her about her uh interest in possibly. Uh, joining the the um. Z B A. Ms. Kara, can you hear us and unmute yourself?
Yes, I can hear you all. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for. Thank you for being here. Uh, I know you had filled out a a talent bank form several months ago and had. Attended a meeting. Uh, where we all sort of discussed your interest. In joining the Z B A as an associate member. And pardon me while I flip through my papers trying to find. The papers I had um. Set aside for this. Um, and you're now you wanted to take some time to to consider whether you wish to uh. To join us or or not. And the fact that you're you're back again is an encouraging uh. Our encouraging uh sign, I guess. Uh, and your thoughts about joining the um. And joining the Z B A if the select board I should choose to appoint you.
Yeah, I uh I would consider it as my privilege. I want to understand um. What's happening? How does this appeals go um and everything that's being talked about? Uh, I think this is my second meeting and um. You know, I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to uh work with everyone.
Okay, and you understand that we. Meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month generally. Uh, although the fourth Tuesday only if there is a business that brings us. Together, would that be a um, would that be a problem for you?
No, I think after seven, uh, typically I have a class come six fifteen to seven fifteen, so every. Every Tuesday, whenever we have to meet second or fourth Tuesday, I can join fifteen minutes late, but I can evening works for me.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Kara, fellow board members?
I have a question. If we're supposed to begin at seven o'clock and call the role. Uh, I don't know how how we can conduct business um. Without a member present during that time. As a point of order, that's my only question.
Well, I think it's a good, it's a good question. I suppose we could. We could do what the planning board does, which is to start their meetings at seven fifteen. Uh, I don't know why they do that, but I suspect it may be because one of their members has. A uh, when I see Alvaro shaking his head. And perhaps has has a conflict, so.
Yep.
Um, if we were to choose to do that, we could. I'm not suggesting we should or we shouldn't. It would be subject to to discussion. Uh, it would also, I think, probably be a a matter for the select board to consider. Uh. When it if it can, if we vote to advance Ms. Kara's application along. To them, it would only be fair to point. Point that out. And whether that would um present a problem for any of us, it it wouldn't be a problem for me, but. Um, you know, I won't speak for your your others.
Ms. Ms. Kara, um, i- is that class something that's going to continue indefinitely, or is that? Like you get to the end of the semester and then next year, there might be a little bit of a different schedule. Do you do you have a sense of that?
Yeah, this particular class like is always on Tuesday at six fifteen to seven fifteen every Tuesday. But that being said, I feel bad that for one member, uh, others have to make a change. I am, I think, willing to forego because it's only going to be not all Tuesdays, just two Tuesdays of the month. Um, I will ask my teacher if she has a way to move it. I doubt it because there's a lot of um uh people who join from Colorado and other places, which is only five o'clock for them. Uh, but I think I can skip early um one, I mean, on those days, instead of you moving the meeting just for one member.
Okay.
Um, Brian, you're speaking, but I don't know if you're speaking to us.
No, I'm not speaking to you.
Just making sure we didn't forget the mute.
Nothing personal there, I hope. That's okay. Um, okay, Ms. Kara, do you have any experience with um land land use or? Sort of legal proceedings, semi legal proceedings like like we do here. I I know you have an MBA from. Framingham State and you're an IT manager, so. Certainly, if we you could solve any of our Zoom problems, probably so. Which would be very valuable.
Thank you. Um, apart from my IT experience and the MBA from uh the Framingham State. The bylaws and everything else I have heard is when uh we have a business resource group called uh Women Rock Tech at my company. I'm a part of that. Uh, I'm a big sponsor of that. I bring in a lot of speakers to those events and everything. And recently, from a very friendly B R G, we made it very um um. Made it like an official thing by putting the uh bylaws and everything like how do we the. Uh, who are what are the positions? When do we do elections for that and all of that? That's the only experience I have somewhat relevant to this. Um, but not anything in legal or um in the zonal appeals.
And how long have you lived in the town of Ashland, if I may ask?
Yeah, sure. Uh, thirteen and a half years.
Okay.
Since two thousand nine uh November.
And. Any other questions for members of the board? Well, that the the. The procedure, um, Ms. Kara is to um for. Potential members to meet with us and discuss discuss things and then for the board. Uh, to make a recommendation to the select board, which is the appointing agency. Uh, they're the ones that make the determination whether to appoint someone or or not. Uh. And typically, we have that discussion um after we've um. Met with the uh with the applicant and so we're not hiding anything. We. Discuss in front of the applicant, so.
Mm hmm.
Um. And I guess as as chairman, I'll I'll volunteer to go first. Um. You know, I think certainly Ms. Kara is bright enough and um. As um would be potentially a good associate member. Um, she would bring some diversity to the uh board because I would point out. That at the moment, we have. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six males, uh, and it might be nice to have. Um. A different perspective uh from that. Also, uh, somebody who like Anton is a little younger than. Some of our more senior board members like Stu and myself and Brian is sort of in the middle there. Uh. You know, I I think as we did with the last um candidate, I would I would be very comfortable in. Uh, forwarding um. Ms. Kara's application to the select board for consideration and for their appointment if they so choose. Brian, thoughts?
Uh, I agree with you, Stu. Uh, John, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Stu?
I have no problem.
Okay, Anton?
I agree and would also just say that if people did want to push to seven fifteen, that would make my life a lot easier too.
You should have spoken up earlier, but that's that's good. And Ryan, your thoughts?
I I I completely echo Anton on on both points. Uh, there's a little bit of white knuckling for the seven o'clock, so. Seven fifteen would be even better on my end, but um. I certainly am in favor of of recommending Ms. Kara to the board.
We can take that up with the Elvaro and also with Peter offline to see how that would. How that corresponds with their schedule because we do need uh the help of um. At least Elvaro, who is going to be uh responsible for dealing with us, I think, going forward.
Yes, and I can personally work at seven fifteen or seven. It doesn't really make a difference for me, so I'm happy to help either time, but works best for everybody.
Okay, good, good to hear. Okay, well, with that respect, um. I think the vote was five to nothing to uh forward Ms. Kara's application to the select board. For consideration as an associate member of the Z B A, and I vote in favor of that.
So do I.
I vote in favor also.
I vote in favor.
I vote in favor as well.
Okay, very good. Um. I've been calling you, Ms. Kara, but can I call you Sunita?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that. Um, I would I didn't know that if it's legal or something that everybody is calling.
I was taught a long time ago that to call somebody miss or misses and not just assume their first name.
Be fine.
That it's old school and I am nothing if not old school. Uh, okay, I'm Sunita. The way this works is as the chairman of the board, I will send a. A letter to Susan Roby, who was the secretary of the select board. Uh, addressed to the select board indicating that we have met on several occasions, our discussion tonight. And our recommendation, and then you will hear uh from uh the select board. Typically, they request someone who they do uh. Wish to appoint to come before, excuse me, the select board uh at a meeting. Oftentimes, you can do that via Zoom where they have an opportunity to ask questions and then and then take a vote. And they may or may not want me to be uh present uh during that process. Um, I will get the uh email out to them within a couple of days. Uh, we'll copy the full board and you, so you see what we what we said about you. And uh hopefully, the select board will get back to you uh soon.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything further? Did you want to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask how many members, but we just I just came to know that uh apart from. My membership being considered, there are six more members present for the Z B A.
There are three what we refer to as full members, which are set by the Ashland zoning bylaws. And then there are four associate members and the associate members. Uh, able to participate in all the meetings and all the hearings. Uh, but they only vote on a matter. Uh, if one of the three members uh is not available uh for whatever reason to vote. So if the we have three associate members, Anton and Ryan and Stu. And um the next associate member, there's one open position uh which the select board um will fill at some point.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I believe that concludes um. Item number two on the agenda. We've concluded item number three, which leads us to. Item number four, which are the leading minutes. For our April eleventh meeting, uh draft minutes were sent out. Um. And. I noted. One, two, two very, three very minor um. Changes uh the. Numbers of the pages. Apart from the first page, I'll say page five oh five, and that needs to be corrected to properly uh. Number the pages. On page three. On the fifth full paragraph on line three. It says that statute sets for with regards. And it should be fourth with regards. I believe. And then on the next page, uh. On the third paragraph from the bottom. On line three. Uh, the letter should have been dated October thirty first, twenty twenty two. Not November thirty. It should be not November thirty one, twenty twenty two, which was the cause of much of the. Confusion for the last matter, uh, but those are the only minor changes that I had. Anybody else have any potential, any changes, corrections?
No.
Okay, does somebody wish to make a motion to approve the minutes with those minor changes that I announced?
I move we accept the minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, I John Trefetham vote in favor.
I Brian Forrest all vote in favor.
Hi Stuart Siegel vote in favor.
Hi Anton de Camarov, but present.
Hi Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Excellent, then that is done. And going on to the fifth and last item on the agenda, staff updates and administrative matters. Um, Elvaro, was there anything in particular to report on that?
No, John, nothing.
Okay. Um, is there anything in the pipeline that we would anticipate hearing uh at our next meeting?
As of now, no, I know that uh Peter mentioned that there might be something coming in, but. I don't know exactly. As of now, no. Yep.
Um, very good. Well, that sounds like we have concluded all of our business for tonight. So would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Second? I John Trefetham, oh, sorry, Stu, didn't mean to jump on your second there in my eagerness to get out of here. I John Trefetham vote in favor.
I Brian Forrest all vote in favor.
I Stuart Siegel vote in favor.
I Anton de Camarov vote in favor.
I Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening and we will see you in May.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Good night.